Close the 11 o'clock for someone to pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, first thing up, we have on the agenda is, hope this isn't going to be a visit, you don't have any cards?
Uh, no.
All right, next up, we have public hearing. Public hearing is scheduled for proposed amendments to zoning ordinance to combine, excuse me, to some common town council made on proposed zoning ordinance, with or without amendment on what readings. This is our fourth, I believe, public hearing we've had. This one will be advertised in the newspaper, which is required right before you can actually take action, so the intent is to take action tonight. Okay, the public hearing is open?
No one can sign up.
What?
No one can sign up to speak.
My public hearing? Okay. Any questions, anyone? All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion, and Clint has the second, all's in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. All items on extended agenda proceed to be self-explanatory, and will be enacted by one motion. Unless you want to pull it off and discuss it separately. Do we have any questions, any changes, amendments, any issues?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I'll second.
All right, Daryl, Daryl's second in it.
Clint is the motion?
Clint made the motion to approve the consent agenda, Daryl's second in it. All's in favor? All right, thank you. Our next up, we have regular agenda. First up is consideration of outdoor lighting ordinance by Mr. Reed. It was back then, everyone has the draft with some changes, just to...
Yes, you guys should have received the email that I sent a week or more ago, maybe even two weeks ago, that included several, just two or three, I believe, recommended changes. They came from several folks on the council, and at consideration, we made those changes. Did everyone get the email? Have opportunity to review? Okay. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The, I did, the changes in color, so if it was in red, we ultimately eliminated it, and if it was green, added. Okay? The biggest, the biggest change, quite frankly, was this one on page five, because I had included a requirement that within a 10-year timeframe after approval of the ordinance, that the entire town would be IDA compliant, meaning public as well as private residences. That was felt by many to be a little bit strong, and so I eliminated it, okay? But everyone should understand that IDA put out new requirements in June of 2018, and since we had already started progress in terms of working toward getting the designation, we fell under the previous set of guidelines. But the new guidelines, again, that were drafted and approved in June of 2018, does require a 10-year timeframe. So at some point, I have no idea when, you know, we may be required to revisit. You sent?
See, there's an event to taking 18 months on project.
Yes.
You don't work on this 18 months.
You're trying to tell me something. Okay, the other change was, this one, this one resulted in really simplifying the shielding requirements based on the amount of lumens, the brightness of the lights. I had drafted the red first. Well, that's not correct. Really, it was above 1500 needed, 1500, not 500, needed to be fully shielded, and then between 1499 and, I believe that's a 900.
You had your equalization.
Yeah, okay, yes, I did, thank you. So to simplify it, and this meets, again, IDA standards, anything above 15 has to be fully shielded, and anything less than, there is no shielding required. So, any questions on that? I mean, that's pretty much it. And then the last change, I believe...
One more, maybe?
There you go. Change the last part. Oh, this was, let me try to remember.
I think you had it.
This was the... Yeah, this was the one, yeah, that limits the amount of unshielded in... Oh, I haven't, are we in read? Yeah.
So it set the residential at 10,000 lumens, which is like...
Yeah, so...
15 floodlights.
So it set standards for the amount of lumens per acre shielded, and then also for unshielded. Right? Yep. So we made that. That change was not driven by any welding here in the city, but was driven more by IDA. So, I know something, what changes have we made?
Any questions?
I have a question. I can't quite remember. Is there a limit on the amount of light you can have as long as it's shielded?
No.
All right. Can I make a motion, Ed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion after 18 months.
You ought to be able to second.
That we approved the outdoor lighting ordinance.
All right, I have a motion to approve the outdoor lighting. It's what I said. Clint's got the second. All's in favor? Well, very good, Ed, there you go.
Very good, Ed, good job.
I appreciate you making the changes, Ed. I know, I know it's hard, people work a long time, somebody needs to pick some changes on it.
What was the bigger one?
I appreciate you. Wasn't it trying to leave the papers, I'm trying to backtrack to see just how long this project was going on.
It's been a while.
All right, next up, we have consideration of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so we talked about the zoning for almost a year, we had on the agenda, but we've changed in the last three meetings. So unless there's an issue, which there shouldn't be, because nothing's changed in the last two meetings, so we can now officially change the ordinance. The change there, which is red line. Okay? Any questions? Nothing's changed since the last meeting.
I have a motion to approve the zoning ordinance, that's presented in the last three or four public hearings.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the zoning ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, Daryl's got the second, all's in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Next up is consideration of professional services agreement. So what that is, so many of you don't know what this is, because you haven't seen the first iteration of this. So what a PSA agreement is, is that we don't have staff. We don't have a staff engineer, we don't have staff people, you know, we don't have an attorney on our staff that's getting paid a salary. So for us, if somebody were to drop it in development, we have to pay people to evaluate our side of it. So, and Andy can correct me, for a lot of small towns, since you don't have it, the developer pays for it. Because we don't have the resources to, you know, pay the engineer thousands of dollars to go through a, you know, a 500-house development, look at the streets and the roads, and the... Why should we pay for that? So what the PSA does is it sets up a bucket of money that they pay into, and then they agree that we will just pay, we'll pay the fees out of it. So they're paying our side of evaluating their proposal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think this is all segregated funds, right? This is all goes and goes on account.
And, and we did this five years ago, six years ago? Landplan got very close to starting, and we executed this, and then gave us $50,000, we escrowed it, and so we were preparing, and then we don't see anything out there, so they...
We closed the account.
We closed the account and gave them back their money after a couple months.
And also disbanded the PSA that we got attached to.
That's right. So what we've done now is, one of the things that I did ask Leonard work on and Andy to review was, to make this a form which is fill in the blank. We're not going to recreate this. If somebody from across the street comes in, or somebody in the woods comes in, we want to be able to have one document, so if any developer shows up, look, this is the agreement. We're not tailoring it for you. You're not going to pay a different rate, you're not going to, it's one document, one size fits all. And that's kind of what it is. Andy, do you...
Yeah, so what professional services agreements do, and it's not really only small towns, but all, pretty much most of the surrounding developing towns, take advantage of this. And what it makes developers to have the financial capability of putting development in to pay their own money. And the dispel, just don't have that capability. So it allows you to have, you know, consulting, attorney, planner, maybe an engineer, so that, so that they can evaluate the plan and represent your best interest, so you get hopefully more of the development that you want, the standards that you want, and the developer pays for that. And it's customary to be done that way. It's done by a lot of cities all around here. We're doing it again with a lot of cities all around here, so we, I've provided this professional sources agreement to Landplan probably three times through the years as they've gone through their iterations of what they're going to develop, and so, and it's customary at developers, developers that know what they're doing, know that this is expected. So we use this probably 12, 20 times a year in developments.
Andy, how would you reckon, so the implementation of this would be what, like I would fill this out and bring to council a filled-in version of this?
Yeah, that'd be fine, or they could, either one. And, and then you need to, it's a contract. So it's basically a contract between the city and the town, the developer, and so you need, we need to be approved by the council, approved by the development company, whatever it is, an LLC or LP, and then it's effective, they need to deposit the money, and then they can start with whatever they need to, a flat, zoning, annexation, whatever, or multiple sequence of events to get, to start their building site plan. So there's a lot of, you know, tools, conduvables that they bring depending upon their...
And you're comfortable that if we just fill in the blanks?
Yeah, sure.
That that is, you wouldn't need to review it after that?
No.
Okay. As long as we...
Is it, do we have the ability to revisit a subject that starts, you're two years in, and the book parties want to revisit?
Sure.
Subject, any kind of contract, right?
Yes, it can modify it, just like any contract.
Well, they could do phase one, and then, you know, two years, three years later, start phase two, right, or something, where you're back to the engineering.
Sure, and that happens when it's a very large development.
I was just thinking about, if it goes on long enough, sometimes rates, building rates change.
That's right.
Any questions? Any chance to begin again?
Just great for...
Yeah. So protects the city, protects the town.
Okay. All right, so I don't know, it says consideration, but I don't know what the reaction would be, I mean, yeah, it's not filled out, it's a blank, so you can't, I don't think we want to put a blank contract.
Yeah, I think we agreed it's at the tip of a, we could execute, once the blanks are filled out.
Yeah, I'll fill in the blanks. Okay.
And, so I guess the next step is Landplan, you, you mentioned that, though, Landplans, aren't you?
Yeah, they've seen this.
Okay.
Three times at least.
Okay, yeah.
They want to see it again.
And that's fine, that's fine, it's just, you know...
You're okay with me sending this to them?
Sure.
All right, very good.
Have to talk with them, or they have, at their firm, consultants.
All right. Okay, so next up, we have item number four, consideration approval of engineering project for the concrete road. All right, so we have, Todd Strauss is here from Kimley Horn, and we went through the, all their nice stuff which we kept, which has the timelines. So what I'm, what I'm asking council to do, when we did the other part of the town, what we did is we spent a lot of money on the geotech work, doing boring to make sure we understood the soil, so they could design the road. But we, we, we were, we spent, we're more cost efficient on the survey work. We used LiDAR, and we used centerline, we didn't get out there, because there wasn't a lot of obstructions in the road, it was pretty straightforward. This is going to be the opposite. The soil, it's, you know, we're going to do borings, but we're going to not do to the extent anywhere near what you do over here. But the survey work, we got over here, there's lift stations, there's culverts, there's drainage easements, there's, there's all those mailboxes, there's 50 more items over here that are going to be on the survey than there were over there. It's just a lot more complex environment over there. So what I'm proposing to council is that we do, right now, we do part two, which is the, the geotech work, which is the 35,000 on the geotech work. So they start doing the borings, and they can start doing that work. So Todd, from that geotech work, you already have the existing one from here, right? You'll be able to tell us some assessment of whether it's better, or worse, or more expansive, or less, or something?
Right, from that, we'll be able to see if the section, the street section that we use over here is going to be adequate, or if there may be some areas that you need to do something to it differently, which is depending on the geotech, but basically we can be able to tell you what the, what the strength of the soil is, and what the cross-section of the road is going to need to be over here.
So if we do this task, what's the deliverable?
So you'll get a geotech report, and so really, a lot of that effort is a sub, a geotech consultant, and then there's just some effort in there for us to coordinate with them. You'll get pouring logs of every, so you'll see the cross-section of the soil on every floor location, and then there'll be a report kind of detailing the laboratory methods, and then recommendations on various cross-sections, or if there's any sort of soil stabilization that they require.
Do they make any, any engineering recommendations, or they're literally just a lab?
No, it's an engineer.
Eight feet of clay, two feet of...
It's okay, so that, it's a lab, but it'll be signed, they're the licensed professionals here, the geotechnologists here, will sign this.
So they'll come from this, we'll know whether or not, we'll know the cross-section of the timelines.
Right.
What we have is sufficient.
Right.
And the next step would be the survey and actually executing the road.
Right, and then we use a geotech to basically put that cross-section into, into the details of the plans.
So from the geotech work, you'll be able to come up with the cross-section, or is that part of engineering?
Well, kind of both, but the cross-section will be part of the geotech report.
Okay. So, so we'll know, like, the PBR, or whatever, how expansive it is?
Correct, right, and we'll be able to detail if there's some lengths in certain areas that maybe need something different, or if the entire cross-section is going to be adequate for the, for all of the roads.
Do they bore down like a, like a house pier, do they go down 25 feet looking for shale, or they only go down like five feet?
No, for roads typically, it's just 10 feet.
Okay.
Is adequate, so if there's any sort of structures that were replacing underground structures with a good deeper, it's not necessary for this.
And you would pick the locations yourselves, right? We're not involved in that?
Um, no.
That's an engineer.
Right, correct, yeah. Be every thousand feet, but we'll give them direction on, you know, that may, may change this a little bit to make sure we're not right in the middle of the intersection, or someone's driveway, you know, but we'll give them a map to show them where we want those.
Are those samples likely to change much through the shores? Is it normal for it to be big changes, or, did you see many, many trees over here?
Not a whole lot, but I've seen change, there's really no, no answer to that, because I've seen it where it could be the same entire, and I've seen one where it did feel like it's just a completely, where the, the line of sound seems, starts five feet higher than, you know?
And so they could change the cross-section, and that faster to transition to accommodate that?
Yep.
I mean, my, my hope is that our cross-section will be stout.
Right.
Everywhere. It might be overdone in certain places, but we're not going to change it.
Right.
It'll be, it'll meet all the criteria.
Right, and that's part of coordination, we'll, we'll show them and, and talk through what, what was done over here, and give them the choice of a report over here, and then talk through some of those options, and ask them to, you know, is this going to be enough, or do we need something more stout, as you said, but I tend to agree, I probably, I would be surprised if something, if it comes back any, any different than what, really, to do the geotech here right now, to a little, I'd be surprised if it came back with a different cross-section that was used over here.
Six inches of concrete is pretty standard?
You have residential roofs, six to eight inches.
So to make it stronger, you'd add more base, or you'd actually add more concrete?
You could, you'd add more base, so if you're, or you may have to, they may say you need to do some line stabilization, or you need to excavate, bring in more base, or soil injection, there's a lot of techniques that could be used to stabilize the soil.
Questions?
If this gets approved today, what's the timeline for it? When would it start, and when would it announce, you know?
So it would take, it would take at least six weeks, they could start within a couple weeks after we coordinated the locations, but it would take at least six weeks to actually do the work and get in their kind of rotation of work, and then, and then to, just to get into their laboratory and run the tests, like about four weeks after they do the work, they run the test, and then analyze it, and the rest of the work. So I think all in, you're looking at, yeah, four to eight weeks, just to be able to quickly move and take a push into their schedule.
So Todd, on that, I'm looking at your timeline down there in the middle. So it says notice of to proceed with the design. We're not doing that, right?
Right.
We're not there yet.
Right.
But, but is that an actual, is that what we, so that's what we tasked you to do, design, that's task order number three, whatever, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what we're doing is the geotech, which according to that calendar was April.
Right.
So we're ahead.
Right.
Okay. And it says two months there.
Right, and the surveys probably, you know, come up together, but the survey will take a lot longer than, than the geotech work, but just because it's people on the ground, you know, walking every single element of the project, and, and surveying, tying everything, and the whole cross-section of the street, the whole right of the street.
So we're really not ahead, because all we're, we're skipping task one to go on to task two, but then we're going to have to go back into task one.
Right, and the survey and geotech are different careers, so they could be running concurrently, so really, it's the survey is the longer lead time than that schedule.
Right, I'm trying to see where... Okay. Okay. And like I said, geotech for us is over there. I think it's something we want to pick off now. The nice thing about the geotech work is you can stick it on the shelf.
Right.
It doesn't have an expiration date.
So it'll set a few million years to settle, or there are things that might change those too.
Yeah.
But you're saying we can do the survey and the geotech at the same time?
We, we could do it, but right now?
Yeah.
With the budget amendment, we're going to do them separately right now.
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to that.
And that's not a problem, there, there's separate careers, and it, it's pretty standard, yeah. You just need them both done before you can start the design. Right, and there's some things we can do with the preliminary design, or design without surveying, but if you were to take it, correct up, and then run it, take it surveying back. We'll need them both done before you can complete the design.
Okay.
What's the difference between the terms of compensation and then the cost per phase of face approaches desire? Like the geotech, there's a $10,000 difference between up here and down here.
So we broke it up like this, so that you could, the town would have the option if, you just cut us loose all at once, so we wanted, it's really the same total price that, that, you know, a lot of the coordination with the geotech and the survey would be just part of the design effort, but since we're just doing the geotech, we need some, some money in there for us to coordinate with the, the locations, and, and then, and then look at the detail, basically that's some, some from the prime consulting corporation, so that, that's where we basically just pull it out of, yeah, the plans and contract documents.
Right, you're just, you're just moving money from one bucket into another.
Right.
The fee, the total is the same.
The total is the same, yeah.
And then it's a little confusing right here, because there's a small typo, 10,000, 5,000, so it's...
I think, so I...
I just thought maybe you, you know, if we chose option one, there was a discount option two, but then I was like, oh, it's the same lump sum at the bottom, so...
The reason it's laid out this way, so the first one is what, how they would normally go about it, the second one was us asking, what can we pull forward, and how we can do a lump out of pocket, and so that was the second option.
Part of what we're doing financially is trying to juggle, that if we pay everything off, in, in, to 2014, we had years, and we piled up about $800,000 in cash, and at that point, we paid all this stuff out of pocket, right at the beginning, we just, we just wrote checks, paid it all out first, and then we borrowed the money. We weren't worried about that, because even paying it all out, we still had enough money, that like 500,000 were a bond rated, we got a great rating, because we still had $500,000 in there. Well, we have about $500,000 now, in total, in an all-in, so if we paid all this out of pocket, we're going to be cash bad. We're going to have money, but, you know, we're not going to look as good as we need to look, with our, with our bonds, you know, we're going to, so that's just juggling, we're trying to do. So for now, the cheapest thing to pick off and make progress is task two.
And it has a shelf life.
Yeah, we can move it down the road, and we can't lose that money, it can't go away.
We could do the survey now, but some houses could come in, so there'd be some other driveways, and they could build another mailbox.
Exactly. We'd have to go back and update the survey work again, so really wanting that kind of ready to... But that's, that's a good question, I mean, that's... Okay? So, so what we're going to do is, so make sure everybody understands, so what we're going to do, so we're, we're going to do a budget amendment to put this money in there. Okay? That, that's what the budget amendment is for, is to, is to rejigger a few numbers in there, and put this into the city, because the city pays this, right? This is a city capex, so that's coming up. But I think we need a motion to...
We have a motion.
...prove made to task the engineer to execute the base... It's one there, right?
Yeah, that's one.
Geotech analysis.
It's actually task two, but there it's phase one, I'm getting confused. The geotech analysis.
I have a motion to approve the mayor to execute a contract with Kimley Horn to, to perform the geotech analysis.
Okay, a motion, second, all's in favor? Thank you, all right, so we will do that. Todd, you're on the clock.
All right. Take the rest of the night off, you know?
All right, next up is consideration of capital improvements. Okay, so what this is, we have two, two projects which we kind of need to get underway pretty quickly. One we've talked about before, which is this ceiling line rerouting, to take the, take the load off of the stove lift station, we've talked about that before, we'll go over the technical details on that. We have a bid in for the, for the, for the project here of 35,6, so that's, that's what it costs. Now, when we get into the, into the budget amendment, we'll talk about in a second. When we did our, when we did our, we, we didn't do that much capex in our budget for this year, we put almost all the money in the engineer, because we thought we were going to be dealing with a well. So what we're going to do is rearrange that... So what we're going to do is rearrange that saved money. We're actually going to use less of it, but we're going to rearrange that. So this isn't new money that we're going to have to spend. It's money that we allocated to Todd, which now we're going to take away from him. But this is the task to, to do the sewer rerouting, okay?
So the thing to note here, it's the first two line hundreds are employed, that third one was just an option of that, and what would it be if we purchased our floor machine? It doesn't roll up into the, the estimates of the two, first two tasks.
Right, yeah, it gives an option, you know. Now, we're, we're not in a good position to start acquiring equipment. We just don't have enough, you know, repetition yet to, to start acquiring stuff that we're going to put on a shelf somewhere. We're going to have shelves to put it on, so, and I don't want to buy a $10,000 piece of equipment and, you know, put it somewhere.
Yeah, but it's just, it's nice to know, right, that in this case, the rental is the better option. We don't, we don't foresee anything bringing itself over.
I don't see anything, you know. We haven't had to use it yet. The roads have been in for almost five years over here. We haven't pulled one time on this side of the street, so I don't see it.
I agree.
And this is a, I think this is a really going to help us a lot with the lift station. I dealt with someone the last week who's putting in check valves, because they're having issues with the sewer.
And that's going to happen for, how many years has that been going on?
Yeah, so they, just this week, they're calling plumbers to put in new check valves and everything in the yard, because they're concerned with the sewer. That lift station is having issues, so...
Yeah, it's a deficiency, and he's...
Okay, so what we need to do is, because this is a capex expenditure over, I think, $10,000, I need approval on this particular task before I can do it.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
When do you think you would start, and how long?
I told him I want it done before the spring rains. And I think he told me, he's already started, he's got to get all the utility line markings out. We talked about it today, actually. It should be okay, because he's away from all the power lines, he's in the bar ditch.
And those homeowners that are affected, either give up personal contact of some sort, so...
Yeah, but really, the only thing that's going to happen, we're going to be digging in the bar ditch. We're going to stay in the bar ditch, and we'll be bored under the driveways, so there should be no...
Nobody impacted that, but at least let them know that, what's going on.
Yeah, when they see, yeah, because there's going to be equipment, right? But it shouldn't, it won't put anybody out of the driveway, and it's all, it's all on city property, so... We'll make it clean when we're done, but I mean, it's really, no one's yard is going to get irreparable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, those that are impacted, that maybe don't follow the day-to-day activities, at least.
I mean, the nice thing is...
Eight homeowners, right, we can reach out to them.
It's a force made, which means it can stay like two feet under the ground. It doesn't have to be 20 feet under the ground, it's only a four-inch pipe. It's a four-inch force made.
Will there be interruption of any type of services?
No, in fact, what we're going to...